Okay, now we're going to re-reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council. And we have nothing to report, Mr. City Attorney?
That is correct, Madam Mayor. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, in which case, we will close the special meeting and open the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Council members Aquino?
Here.
Gaylord?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
Sheldon?
Here.
And Howell?
Here. And with that, if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any agenda updates?
You have one agenda update this evening. Consent item 6A, resolution number 10229, has had an amendment to the staff report. That amendment has been provided to the council members and is available to the public at the back table.
Okay, and with that, we will move to business from the floor. And our first speaker is Mike Barnbaum.
Good evening and Happy New Year to everybody. Mike Barnbaum, and I'm a transit advocate in the Secog region. I wanted to present this evening to the council the draft route descriptions of a new network for the Sacramento Regional Transit District in the project called SACRT FORWARD, formerly known as Regional Transits Route Optimization Study. The study has been going on for several months, if not at least a couple of years now. And staff has been holding several open houses, online forums, community fairs, and community events to get out and get people's input on what folks would like to see regarding travel patterns, coverage, frequency, utilizing current resources, and forecasting and assuming no new financial resources under a new network. With that, there was a lot of give and take, as what you'll see in the nine pages in front of you. Again, in draft form only. There has been nothing that has been formally approved of this just yet. The staff is expecting to go back to the full Regional Transit Board with just a news and information update on this topic on Monday, January 28th. And they expect to be before the full board on Monday, February 25th, for a final vote and approval with any modifications they're going to bring. And the new network would go into effect on Sunday, June 16th, the first day after the statewide constitutional deadline, which the legislature needs to have a budget in place to the governor or the legislature doesn't get paid. So those are some of the important dates and stuff coming up on this. If you are further interested, again, I kind of gave a little bit of a tease. But this board mostly meets on the second and fourth Monday of each month. Some exceptions here and there will apply. Open session of this board begins at 5:30 PM. And normally, the board would convene in the closed session after open session has been adjourned for their full meeting. So if you're interested, I will remain at the council and speak to you later on item 7B. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Next, we have Sim Phillip. Then after Sim will be Roberta Long. And then...
Hi there. Today, the Fido Dog Park was closed, and yesterday it was closed. And I'm hoping to get some more expanded hours. It's closed on Wednesdays for maintenance, and I don't think it needs to be closed all day. I haven't collected any signatures from the people that go to the Fido Dog Park, but I know that everybody loves it, and it's great here in Folsom, great to have a dog park. I'm hoping to get expanded hours to seven days a week and not have it closed. It was closed today and yesterday because it was too wet, although it was open three days ago when it was raining. Go figure. I couldn't get through to anybody today. I tried to call twice. I had to Facebook my favorite councilman today, and he answered my questions. Would it help if I collected signatures or took pictures when it was raining?
Nope, we believe you.
All right.
And our Parks and Rec Director is here. Perhaps you could give your contact information to Ms. Pajoni, and she could provide you with some additional detail about what's required for those Wednesday closures and how much rainfall determines whether or not we actually close it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Howell.
You're welcome. Thanks for being here. Next, we have Roberta Long, and then Ernie Sheldon Jr. This actually begins the video, apparently, video portion of our presentation.
My name is Roberta Long. I live, shop, work, and play in Folsom. And I am here, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I'm here tonight to invite you to watch Finding Your Roots next Tuesday at 8 o'clock, conveniently not a board meeting. And...
Roberta, is that on PBS?
On the 15th.
What network is it on?
I'm sorry?
What network is the show on?
Channel 6, KVIE.
Okay, PBS.
And we are... We will be watching Lisa Ling, who is the granddaughter of the man who opened Hop Sing Eat Shop on Center Street. That business is now continuing as Hop Sing Palace on Center Street. Lisa is a local girl, and she grew up in Carmichael, went to Del Campo. And she is currently the host of a CNN documentary series called This Is Your Life, which is an award-winning program that she writes, directs, performs, and produces. And the Folsom Historical Society, and I helped do research for this program, and with the help of some local people, we were able to answer some of the questions that they had. So we're very proud to be able to help Lisa. And I just want to add that the Folsom Historical Society is in the process of converting the former residence of Howard Senior and Mabel Chan at 917 Center Street into a Chinese Heritage Museum, which will honor the contributions of the Gold Rush and later Chinese people who lived in and work here. I have some copies of the notice I can leave in the back if anyone is interested.
Thank you, Roberta.
And Mayor, I just wanted to add that we have shared that information on our social media outlets as well to spread the word about the program.
Great, thank you. Ernie Sheldon Jr.
Ernie Sheldon Jr., we have here a short video presentation of the sights seen at the recent Wild Nights and Holiday Lights at the Zoo Sanctuary. It's a big shout-out thank you to all the people that worked on it and made it a big success.
Not yet. You gotta write it back.
Lydia, are you able to get back?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Go back to where the logo was. There are some credits.
Thank you very much for doing that.
When we went to see that, it's been two years since I've been back to the event because of rain out and the scheduling. But it was so impressive. I mean, not only the, all the efforts of the lights, but just the construction that went on, counting the new barn and all. I just asked my son if he could do that, because he did things like that in the past, and he did. And I said, "I think it'd be great to show it to the town and say thank you to all those people that did that." It was fantastic.
Yes, and it's always good, just so you know, to do what your father tells you. And you did it very, very well. And thanks to all of the people. And I understand there's regular people, there were service clubs involved, and it was absolutely beautiful. And I understand attendance was up significantly from last year, so that's a good thing. And if you weren't able to see it this year, I encourage people to go next year. And we have no more business from the floor, so we're going to move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar. And we have revised item 6A. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Here.
And Howell?
Yes. And with that, we will move to new business, item 7A. And that is at-large appointments to Arts and Cultural, Historic District Commission, Landscaping and Lighting, District Advisory Committee, Library Commission, Parks and Rec, Planning Commission, Traffic Safety, and Utilities.
Can I make a statement?
Yes, Ernie, go right ahead.
I just want to make a quick, I think this is my fifth time doing this. And I want to say to everybody that applied, everybody in the audience, if someone did not get picked on all the numbers of applicants that we got, it's not because you are not qualified. We just don't have enough jobs for you. Okay, I want to be sure that anybody that did not get selected, that's the reason. And I asked the city manager to talk to the mayor and see after this is all over, if we can't look at the talent that we did not find a spot for and see how somehow we can get them effectively in the city, because it's a waste if we don't take them somehow. But I just wanted to make that, because of my fifth one, and we never said that, and sometimes people go away, think they didn't measure up. They measured up. We just did not have enough openings, as I said. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
On one of these, actually, I wanted to make it official. I officially appointed, my Parks and Rec Commission, Kelly Oaks, has decided to step down just for time commitment issues. So I have appointed Mr. Brian Wallace, who's sitting back there, as my direct appointment to the Parks Commission. So I'd like to give him a hand. And also request that you guys take him off your list for anything else, because I snuck on Gotem. I also wanted to thank all the candidates who ran for city council who put their name in the hat for commission positions to stay actively involved and engaged. It means a lot, so all the folks that are sitting here who ran. And, you know, kudos to you for staying involved.
Okay, and we do have one request to speak, and that's from Ron Pugh, that he wants to talk about the Traffic Safety Committee. So do you want to come up now, or do you want to wait until we get to that point?
Whatever's best.
You know what, you might as well come on up now.
My congratulations to the new council members, obviously, and to Mayor Howell for being re-elected and for being our mayor. It's been my great pleasure to serve on the Traffic Safety Committee. I am hoping that I might be re-appointed to that position. I'd like to finish some things that have been going on south of 50. And I've enjoyed working with our neighborhoods as we've worked on various problems that they bring to the Traffic Safety Committee. And it's just been a great pleasure to get to know them and to work with them, and would ask for another term. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask the clerk to introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So before you this evening is the appointment of at-large members to the city's various commissions and committees. And with three specific exceptions, these commissions are generally comprised of seven members. So there'll be five members that are directly appointed by each council member, and they'll serve a term concurrent with that council member. And then the commissions have two at-large members who serve for two-year terms. And the three exceptions we mentioned are the Historic District Commission, the LNL Committee, and Traffic Safety Committee. For these three commissions, they are all at-large appointments, and they have specific seat requirements. Now traditionally, the Planning Commission has nominated their own members to serve as representatives to the HDC, and that makes the HDC unique in that it has members from another committee serving on it. And when we get to the HDC appointments, the mayor will have some comments regarding those appointments. And for the audience, you'll notice that we're using a new open ballot process. Each member has a pre-printed ballot that they will complete, marking their votes for each commission. Those will be passed in to me. We will read the votes out loud, and the deputy city clerk will mark it on a ballot that you will see displayed on the screen so you can follow along as the votes are cast.
Okay, well, our first commission, and we do these pretty much alphabetically. So the first will be Arts and Cultural Commission, and the council members will be requested to vote for two appointments at large. And I am going to announce that I will be appointing Sally Howard, who appears on our current ballot, as my direct appointment to Arts and Cultural. So if you're planning on voting for Ms. Howard, she's already gone.
So Lydia, you can mark that Sally Howard has been directly appointed by Mayor Howell.
That was my selection, so I need to, in a few minutes, to slip around.
Yeah, well, I'll just point out Brian Wallace's name appears on there as well, so hopefully, nobody's chosen him, because he's also off the table.
That's right.
As far as the ballots that the council members are filling out. No, we got to count the ballots. We're waiting on you.
Did you guys already count them too?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so in no particular order. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Mark Alaman and for John Hall. Mayor Howell votes for Mark Alaman and Tony Oliver. Councilmember Sheldon votes for Mark Alaman and Anne Marie Hudo. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Mark Alaman and Y.K. Chalamchela. Councilmember Gaylord votes for Y.K. Chalamchela and Matthew Keastern.
So one down, one to go, it looks like.
No, that, so based on this voting, Mark Alaman and Y.K. Chalamchela would be appointed.
Okay, that's different from what I thought we were doing.
Yeah.
I thought you still had to have three votes for the second person.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah. We'd have to vote again for another person.
Or change your route.
Which is the same thing as voting again.
So I'm confused. If one person has four, one has two, the rest have one, the person who has two has two.
Historically, we have not appointed anybody at-large without three votes of the council.
Great.
Has to be a majority of the council.
Now, this is a new process. If you would like to vote again and look for three votes for your second at-large member, that's your prerogative.
That would be my personal preference.
First, could I move that we appoint Mark Alaman as our first at-large appointee?
Yes.
Are we going to motion and second on everyone that?
We will.
Yes.
We will.
I'll second that, but I think that, well, we can first vote on that first, I guess, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Okay. So on the appointment of Mark Alaman, councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Here.
And Howell?
Yes.
And then I would motion that we accept the second vote like this, being with two votes as opposed to having three, because it is the majority of votes for the second vote.
And we could have also had one other person, and we would have had a whole bunch of people with one vote. So that's, historically, we've always had three council members support all of the at-large appointments. And the selection process itself is different, but I do not, I'm personally not going to support not getting three votes from the council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If it short-circuits things, I still have an opportunity to make a direct appointment. So I'm happy to change my vote from John Hall to Y.K. to get him to three.
So...
And then I will appoint John Hall as my direct appointment to Arts and Culture.
I still don't like the idea of, because we haven't done this process. I've only done one of these so far, and this process is different from historically, so it would be weird.
The only thing that we're doing differently, Roger, is that we are not jumping to yell out names of potential appointments and put their names into a coffee cup. Because it was very hectic to try to do it that way. We were trying to eliminate a little bit of the drama and do it in a little bit more orderly fashion. But to my mind, that does not change the requirement to have at least three of the five council members support the at-large positions.
The mayor is correct. It is the same process. We're merely just capturing the names on a ballot to kind of avoid the deus chaos of it.
Yep.
And if we're still requiring a motion and a second, you would need to have three votes, so...
Correct.
But you can motion and second, the person who comes in second regardless of three votes, because that's where your three votes would come in, not on the paper, but on the motion.
No, the council would have to support with three votes for that person.
On the motion.
Correct.
This isn't a motion. This is who puts it in. I'm not trying to create chaos, but it doesn't make sense to me that we do it this way, because the whole commission selection process is just conversant in general.
Roger, if only one person had voted for Y.K. and somebody had voted for somebody else...
They would be in position to be voted on by the council. This is numbering them to be voted on by the council.
What you're suggesting is changing the process that we've used forever.
What's wrong with that?
I'm not in favor of doing that. So you've made a motion that you want to, what was your motion?
He's already taken care of this one, so he's going to change his vote to Y.K., so this one's settled. But going forward, if we have another one where it's four and two and 1-1-1-1, or, you know, three and two, 1-1-1-1, or whatever, I would like to...
Want to make a motion to change the process?
Yeah, I'd like to motion to change the process.
And in fact, I'm not even sure that we can, because I believe it's indicated in the charter. Am I correct, Steve?
Steve, could I ask you to weigh in on that?
I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Mayor and the members of the city council. The mayor is correct. The at-large appointments require a majority vote of the whole council, so you will need three votes. So for this case, Councilmember Kozlowski's change of his vote would allow the council to carry forward with approving Y.K.'s appointment. However, for another commission, just keep in mind, you need three votes, majority of the council, at least three, to make the appointment.
Either I misunderstood, or I'm misstating what I mean. On this paper, when we vote, it brings up to a motion. So let's say we voted on Mark, and then Y.K. comes up, and we motion to vote on Y.K. We're just selecting him out of the lottery process on this paper. He got second place. So then we have to vote for three votes, which gives him the three votes. The process isn't being changed by saying that Y.K. should be the one who's up to vote.
No, Roger, the process is being changed, because what is historically, yes, it is.
I'm talking about per the charter.
Per the charter, you have to have the votes of three council members to be appointed at-large.
See, this is what I'm saying. So Y.K. would come up for vote, sorry, Y.K., by the way, sorry for bringing you...
If I may add this, maybe this would be helpful. So Councilmember Gaylord, you're not off either. It's just another way to look at how the council gets the three votes, if not more. However, it may be, it is changing the system like the mayor said, because we are going down the list. We shouldn't be going down the list if we're doing this, if we're doing the ballot tally this way. Y.K. or John Hall or Sally, they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be inconvenienced, or, what's the name of it? I'm having a code. I apologize. I'm trying to make sense of this. They should not be detrimented by their name, not right below, not placed right below Mark Alaman. So you, it's, no matter how you do it, you just need to make sure you have three votes, at least three votes to appoint someone on the council.
All I'm saying is that if this happens again, where we have a first and second place, I feel like the first and second place should get a motion and a second. I feel like the first and second place should get a motion and a vote.
That's not how it has ever worked, Roger. That's what I'm trying to explain to you.
I'm not saying how it's ever worked. I'm saying how this process should be...
The charter requires that you have three votes.
It could work that way, however, by going down the next highest vote getter, it may not be the case if you revote again. In this case, for example, Y.K. may not have two votes.
But he does.
No, but you don't, you don't stop at that now. This is a new system. So what the difference between the other one, as soon as you got three votes, it was over. We have three people with one vote, we have two people that votes are done. Now, we all need to revote, okay?
You all need to revote, correct.
We all need to revote to make it legit, and that solves the problem.
For other items, yes, I would agree with you, Ernie, but in this case, Mike has decided to appoint somebody directly.
Yeah.
And so Mike, basically, instead of her passing out another piece of paper, then...
No, I think we should be able to do a verbo. For example, I would, on what we were going to vote on, I would've voted for Y.K.
Yeah, you would, it would go, you would motion to vote.
Not that we say automatically, I might not have voted for him, and then the other three could've got it if Mike hadn't changed.
So if he failed the vote, we would vote again, as opposed to just voting again when someone else already got more votes on to get on the stage.
It's not about who gets the most votes, Roger. It's about who has three votes of these council members.
Madam Mayor, if I could provide some information, because I'm actually the one who watched the webinars for the City of Roseville and the City of Citrus Heights, who uses this model. I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Gaylord. The problem is, if we have a vote where we have five candidates, each with two votes, who are we gonna bring up first for a vote?
So it's a perfect question. We would, we would revote, because there's more than one. Right now, we have a majority first, majority second, and a third. So as the city clerk announced, it would've been four and two, and we would vote on Mark. You would motion to vote, you would vote, you know, you have to get three to be elected, or be appointed. The second vote would be Y.K., and if Y.K. got three on the dais, he would be appointed. If he didn't, and he failed, you would revote for the rest. It makes no sense to me, just me, if we revoted even though Y.K. had two. And I know, you know, Mike was offering to appoint Y.K., but that's not the point. If we, if this happens again, it makes no sense that there would be a second place.
No, he didn't offer to appoint Y.K. He offered to appoint John Hall as his direct appointment.
No, reverse. Correct.
I, I'm happy to do either. I was just trying to short-circuit this problem. But I do see Councilman Gaylord's point that, in some respects, you could view this voting as choosing the order of chips coming out of the coffee mug. And then the fact that we have to take a vote on the top, or top two, or, you know, whoever has more votes than the others, is sensible also in that ultimately, it is a vote of all of us, and a majority has to accept the appointment. So either way, it could be right. I understand what you're saying, though.
But basically, what we're not going to do is, we're not gonna go back to, prior to your appointing John Hall directly, to saying that it's Mark and Y.K., because Y.K. does not have three votes up there.
Okay, so my apologies for, I thought you were saying you were gonna appoint Y.K.
What I said, just to clarify, is that I was going to change my vote from John Hall to Y.K., so Y.K. would have his three votes necessary to have us vote again to appoint him at large. And I still have an opportunity to appoint somebody directly to the Arts and Culture Commission, and I may appoint John Hall.
If I may, Madam Mayor, what I'm hearing is, all of you are trying to do exactly what the charter says you have to do. Majority vote by the City Council to appoint someone at large. Madam Mayor, as the manager of the meeting, you do get to decide whichever method and methodology you want to use to implement the voting process. It's entirely up to you.
Can I just say one more thing to make sure what I'm saying makes sense? I'm not saying that we automatically vote for who got the majority votes. I'm saying who comes to the dais to vote on should be based upon, in this scenario, it would be Mark and Y.K., because they got the majority of the votes on this process, and we can choose to vote them up or down, right?
Like the runoff election.
Correct.
But again, what happens if you have five people with two votes each, or 10 people with one vote each? How then do you decide who comes in the first order?
We vote.
But then, then you're changing the process each time. Let's stick with the same process.
Sarah's, Sarah's correct.
Because you have two clear majorities. So for planning, you, let's say you...
Well, he doesn't have a majority.
He has the second majority.
Okay, so what we're, so what we're gonna do, what we're gonna do is, right now, we are going to, as the second-place finisher, we are going to vote on, for each, each council member's gonna vote on Y.K. for a position on the Arts and Cultural Commission. Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Howell?
No. So it is Mr. Chalamchela.
Thank you.
So we'll conclude the Arts and Cultural Commission with Mark Alaman and Y.K. Chalamchela appointed as at-large members. John Hall appointed as Councilmember Kozlowski's direct.
Okay, and I believe next up is the Historic District Commission. And this is actually explained in the staff report, as the clerk referred to earlier. There's a total of seven people that sit on the Arts and Cultural Commission. Two of those people are from the Planning Commission. And what has happened historically is that the seven members of the Planning Commission determine who the two people will be that represent the Planning Commission on the Historic District Commission. So for anybody that read the staff report and thought that the council was going to decide who those two planning commissioners were, that is not the case. That will take place at the next Planning Commission meeting, which is, is it next week? The next Planning Commission meeting? Next Wednesday?
February 6th is the next Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, so that's the, the meeting at which the new planning commissioners will be sworn in, and they will vote to determine who the chair and vice chair is gonna be, and who the two people from the Planning Commission will be representing the Planning Commission at the Historic District Commission.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so having clarified that, if my colleagues would be so kind as to vote for the person representing Architect Landscape and the person representing the business representative outside the Sutter Street subarea.
So first, we'll look at votes for the Architect Landscape position. Councilmember Sheldon votes for Robert Goss. Councilmember Aquino votes for Mickey Ancali. Mayor Howell votes for Mickey Ancle, sorry if I'm saying that name wrong. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Mickey Ancle.
Ann Kelly.
Ann Kelly. Boy, I butchered that. I apologize. And Councilmember Gaylord votes for Mickey Ann Kelly. No, I'm sorry, for Robert Goss. That's a big check mark.
You wanna make a motion?
Yes. I will move to appoint Mickey Ann Kelly at-large to the Architect slash Landscape Representative of the Historic District Commission.
Do we have a second?
A second. Councilmember Kozlowski's out.
Okay.
You wanna wait? We can do the votes on the other. We can call the votes on this.
Oh, look, he's back. Now, if the clerk would call the roll on Mickey Ann Kelly for representing Architect Landscape on HDC.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon? And Howell?
Yes.
And with one candidate for the business rep outside Sutter Street, Councilmember Gaylord votes for Mary Acey. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Mary Acey. Mayor Howell votes for Mary Acey. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Mary Acey. And Councilmember Sheldon votes for Mary Acey.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon? And Howell?
Yes. And with that, we will move to the LNL District Advisory Committee.
We should've started this, with this one. There's only one person in each category. We could've handled this.
So we'll just run down each of these, we'll do these collectively. I think that might be a little quicker. So for Vice Mayor Aquino, her votes are for Briggs Ranch, Dave Hart; for Broadstone, Laura Petro; for Broadstone Unit 3, Jamie Mills; for Natoma Station, Joe Marsow; and for Cobble Hills, Joshua Baker. Councilmember Sheldon, for Briggs Ranch, votes for Dave Hart; for Broadstone, votes for Laura Petro; for Broadstone Unit 3, votes for Jamie Mills; for Natoma Station, votes for Joe Marsow; and for Cobble Hills Ridge, votes for Joshua Baker. Mayor Howell, for Briggs Ranch, votes for Dave Hart; for Broadstone, votes for Laura Petro; for Broadstone Unit Number 3, votes for Jamie Mills; for Natoma Station, Joe Marsow; and for Cobble Hills Ridge, Joshua Baker. Councilmember Kozlowski, for Briggs Ranch, votes for Dave Hart; for Broadstone, Laura Petro; for Broadstone Unit 3, Jamie Mills; for Natoma Station, Joe Marsow; for Cobble Hills, Joshua Baker. Councilmember Gaylord, for Briggs Ranch, votes for Dave Hart; for Broadstone, Laura Petro; for Broadstone Unit Number 3, Jamie Mills; for Natoma Station, Joe Marsow; and for Cobble Hills Ridge, Joshua Baker. Mr. City Attorney, could we have one motion for all of these appointments?
Yes, please, Madam Clerk.
I was hoping for that. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon? And Howell?
Yes. And next up, we have the Library Commission. And I believe that, well, Fred Bat is going to be my direct appointment, so I'll make that announcement. And I believe that Y.K. is now off of the list.
Lydia, you'll wanna mark that ballot, that Y.K. Chalamchela is not eligible as he was appointed to Arts and Cultural, and Laura Petro is not eligible as she was appointed to the LNL. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Maureen Galiardi and Anne Marie Hutto.
I think that's actually pronounced Hutto.
Hutto. Councilmember Gaylord votes for Maureen Galiardi and Amar Pohar. Councilmember Sheldon votes for Maureen Galiardi and Anne Marie Hutto. Mayor Howell votes for Maureen Galiardi and Anne Marie Hutto. And Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Maureen Galiardi and Anne Marie Hutto. So motions would be in order for both Maureen, and then for Anne Marie Hutto.
I'll move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon? And Howell?
Yes.
So that takes us to Parks and Rec Commission.
And I have appointed Samantha Davidson as my direct.
So on this ballot, Lydia, you'll also mark, yep? And Laura Petro? And Brian Wallace? As Councilmember Gaylord's direct appointment. Okay, ready? Okay, Councilmember Gaylord votes, wait, hold on.
No overvotes on Parks and Rec.
Everything changes when we, sorry.
All right, so Councilmember Gaylord votes for David Nasworth and C.C. Robinson. Councilmember Sheldon votes for Dave Nasworth and Paul Romero. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Dave Nasworth and Paul Romero. Mayor Howell votes for Barbara Leary and Paul Romero. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Dave Nasworth and C.C. Robinson. So it appears your top two vote-getters are Dave Nasworth and Paul Romero.
Both of which have three votes or more.
Both of which have three votes or more.
So I'll move. We appoint Dave Nasworth and Paul Romero.
I'll second. Clerk would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon? And Howell?
Yes.
Okay.
And our next is the Planning Commission. To take off this list. Brian Wallace.
Mickey Ann Kelly was appointed?
He was appointed directly to Historic District Commission, so...
Correct. So Mickey, Mickey Ann Kelly is, would be ineligible on this ballot.
Okay. And I know Brian Wallace is still on there.
Y.K. has to come off.
Oh, sorry, yes. Okay. I think those are the only ones we have to take off.
Yeah. Yeah, Brian Wallace is off, okay. That's your largest field of applicants at 29. Okay. Councilmember Sheldon votes for Beth Kelly and Barbara Leary.
Conveniently located right next to each other.
Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Kevin Duel and Barbara Leary. Mayor Howell votes for Kevin Duel and Rosario Rodriguez. Councilmember Gaylord votes for Barbara Leary and Aaron Rawls. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Kevin Duel and Barbara Leary. So it looks like your top vote-getters are Kevin Duel and Barbara Leary, both with more than three.
I'll motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Right, so we have three or more.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
On Kevin Duel and Barbara Leary, Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon? And Howell?
Yes. And next up, we have Traffic Safety. And for this, we are voting for two-at-large citizens and one-at-large bicycle/pet safety. Do we have any names that need to come off?
I was just looking through. No, I believe all of these applicants are still eligible.
Uh, no, Y.K. has to come off.
I'm sorry, except for Y.K. So Vice Mayor Aquino, for the citizen representatives, votes for Ronald Pugh and David Salisbury; and for the bicycle/pedestrian safety, votes for Beverly Newman. Councilmember Sheldon votes on the citizen representative for Robert Goss and Ronald Pugh; and for the bicycle/pedestrian, votes for Beverly Newman. Mayor Howell, for the citizen rep, votes for Ronald Pugh and David Salisbury; and on the bicycle/pedestrian, votes for Robert Goss. Councilmember Kozlowski, on the citizen rep, votes for Ronald Pugh and David Salisbury; and on the bike/pedestrian, votes for Mark Moore. Stand by. You've got one. That was supposed to be two, and this was supposed to be one. Councilmember Gaylord, for citizen rep, votes for Ronald Pugh and Mark Moore; and under bicycle/pedestrian, votes for Beverly Newman.
Okay, so that looks to me like we have Ronald Pugh, David Salisbury, and Beverly Newman, all of whom have three plus.
I'll move it. I'll move adoption.
Second.
Appointment, whatever.
You have a motion and a second.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. Next up is Utility Commission, and we're voting for two. Oh, and while we're waiting for Mr. Sheldon to make up his mind, I am going to be reappointing, well, as long as you have the paper in your hand, I'm reappointing Bob Mutchler to Utilities directly.
Oh, her direct appointment?
Okay, so closing out our evening on utility commissions, Councilmember Gaylord votes for Mark Moore and Amar Pohar. Councilmember Sheldon votes for Robert Hess and Thor Rude. Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Robert Hess and Thor Rude. Mayor Howell votes for Robert Hess and Thor Rude. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Robert Hess and Thor Rude. So your top vote-getters are Robert Hess and Thor Rude.
I'll move. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
Is your mic on, Ernie?
It's on now.
Okay.
City Manager took care of it.
Okay, then speak into it.
Okay, thank you. I am going to appoint Mark Moore as my replacement for my four-year. My man is leaving.
For which commission?
Utility Commission.
Okay.
So Mark Moore will be my four-year commitment.
Excellent choice.
And with that, we have completed all of the appointments.
Yes, we have.
Finally.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question about the Arts and Culture Commission particularly? Is there any reason why we can't expand that particular commission?
I actually would welcome a future discussion about whether or not we want to expand Arts and Culture. And there's also, I've actually had some questions from the public about whether or not we should think about either expanding the Historic District Commission or replacing the two Planning Commissioners with members of the public. So I'm happy to have that discussion at a future council meeting.
Thank you.
Can I add maybe a little more emphasis on Utility Commission as well, like more?
Sure, we can talk about that as well, whether or not we wanted to expand the membership.
Staff can bring that back, no problem.
Okay, great. And with that, we are now going to move on to appointment of city council representatives to regional commissions, which is still under new business, item eight, excuse me, 7B. Sorry, Krista, if I'm stealing your thunder tonight. I'll let you have your thunder back at the next meeting. Okay, you can introduce the rest of it, though. You can have the hard part.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item before the council is the appointment of city council representatives to regional commissions. Councilmembers, in addition to their service on this city council, also serve on a variety of regional commissions and committees, and this helps ensure that Folsom's interests are represented throughout the region through direct representation. So there is a list of proposed representatives based on preliminary discussions. And unless there are any questions or comments or further discussion.
The only thing, I do want to ask one question, and I don't remember if I saw this listed when we spoke about this a few weeks ago when we were putting together the list of all the regional commissions. But a resident, a former, and a former city employee contacted me earlier today about a commission that I believe is called the Sacramento Environmental Council, that Bob Bailey previously represented the city on, and my understanding is that, and I don't know how frequently that group has met, but the former city employee that explained this to me said, "Our position on that is currently vacant."
That is correct. Mr. Bailey concluded his term on that commission, and the seat is currently vacant. It is a shared seat, and we have been in communication with the other cities that we share this seat with, and that item will be coming back to your council. Galt has nominated a member to serve, and we will bring that back. The seat traditionally rotates between the cities, and we'll bring that back.
Is that all of the cities, or is it the original fig cities?
No, it's the fig cities.
So it's Folsom, Isleton, and Galt?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
And how recently was Mr. Bailey in that seat?
Hold on. I think we have, I think his term concluded.
I got the impression that it had been vacant for some time.
It has been. We have the information here. If you don't mind, we can get it to you.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay.
And in addition, that commission appointment is not before the council this evening.
I know.
That will return at a later meeting.
Okay. Okay, and do we have an overhead on this item, or no?
We do not, but we can certainly put one up there if you'd like to have it projected.
And could I ask a clarifying question? If I, for some reason, was unable to attend a LAFCO meeting?
It sounds like a Miss America thing. If she's unable to fulfill her duties.
Is that Mayor Howell would fill in as the alternate, or that's the alternate city that's next in line to be the LAFCO?
Okay, I did get clarification of that today from LAFCO staff. The way that works is the city of Folsom was the alternate to the city of Elk Grove, who held the seat for the past two years. So now the city of Folsom holds the seat, and the alternate for that position, I believe, will be the city, someone from the city of Rancho Cordova. So you will be the primary representative on the LAFCO board, and the alternate, I believe, will be a member of the Rancho Cordova City Council.
Okay.
And the reason they do that is so that the representative from the other jurisdiction has the opportunity to attend the meetings and, you know, know what's going on, because LAFCO is kind of moving target because of the issues that they typically deal with, with annexations and spheres of influence and that sort of thing. So that's why they do it that way. Okay, so the proposal is that Sarah Aquino would be the primary representative of ACAP, which is Association of California Cities Aligned with Prisons, the LAFCO board that we just talked about, the Retirement Board Authority for the city of Folsom, and that basically oversees investments for retirees. Roger Gaylord would be the primary representative of the city of Folsom on the two-by-two between the city of Folsom and Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. He would be the primary representative of Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, and the city's representative to TED Corp. I will be the primary for the Southeast Connector, JPA, the RT Board, the Regional Water Authority. I'm the elected official, but that's actually handled by our Utilities Director, Marcus Yasutaki. I will continue to serve on the Retirement Board, the Sacramento Placerville Quarter, JPA, which is basically the railroad easement, and I've been serving on that board for the last 20 years. And I will be the city's representative to Regional County Sanitation District and continue on the STA. And Mr. Kozlowski has agreed to be the primary, one of the reps for the Folsom Eldorado County JPA, and on the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. And Mr. Sheldon will continue on the two-by-two between the city of Folsom and the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District, as well as the Folsom Eldorado County JPA, and I think that's actually a two-by-two as well, isn't it? We didn't call it that, but I think that's what it is. So if we have a motion to the council to approve that, then we can forward the appropriate documentation onto all of these other agencies, which I'm sure is going to take the clerk's office a good part of the day tomorrow.
I can have some of my phone.
Because I'm getting quite a few phone calls about, you know, who's going to be sitting where and when we can be available for meetings.
I move this roster as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell. Yes. Okay. Okay, we will suspend the regular council meeting and convene the joint city council, successor agency, public financing authority, Folsom South 50th Parking Authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, special meeting. The clerk would call the roll.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
And Howell.
Here.
Your one item this evening is the consent calendar, and unless there are changes, a motion would be in order.
A motion to move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk would call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. We will reconvene the regular city council meeting and move on to city manager reports.
Good evening, everyone. We ask that you join the Folsom Chamber of Commerce and Mayor Kerry Howell for her annual State of the City address on Thursday, January 17, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Lakeside Church. If you're interested, tickets are available on the Folsom Chambers website. The mayor will also bring the address to the city council meeting on January 22, and it will also be posted to our website. On Tuesday, January 15, at 10 a.m., there will be a test of the Sacramento Region Emergency Notification System. Participating counties, including Sacramento, Yolo, and Placer, will be part of this exercise. This is an opt-in-only notification that goes to phones, emails, and texts. It is used for messages pertaining to the health, safety, and welfare of our community, and we're asking that local Folsom residents register their cellphones for this alert system at www.sacramento-alert.org, and that link can also be found on our fire department's homepage on the city website. If you've made a New Year's resolution to read more, we can help you at the Folsom Public Library. We're hosting the Winter Reading Challenge now through January 31, sponsored by the Friends of the Folsom Library. If you read five books, you keep track of them on a website, and you can win prizes. So.
Have to write a book report for those?
No, no book report necessary. We have, as Councilmember Sheldon pointed out, we have a lot of folks in this audience and out there that are interested in serving Folsom, and we do have opportunities for you in other ways. Right now, the city of Folsom Police and Fire Departments are looking for Citizens Assisting Public Safety, or CAPS, volunteers. You must complete a Citizens Academy and pass an extensive background check to participate. The academy is an 11-week academy that goes from January to March. If you're interested, please go to folsom.ca.us/police. The Folsom Zoo Sanctuary is looking for volunteer docents. Docents serve a vital role in promoting the zoo sanctuary's educational mission. Docent training classes begin February 11 and continue through March 19, and you can find out more about that at our website as well. And finally, if you are a LEGO enthusiast, and I have a nephew who is among this group, put your LEGO building skills to the challenge in the Third Annual Folsom Public Library LEGO Building Contest, and you're invited to submit your best original by, from January 22 to January 26, and find out more at folsom.ca.us/library. Thank you.
Just to add on to the LEGO thing, if you're not aware of it, and your nephew may not be aware of it, there's a LEGO exhibit, I believe, at Mather in Rancho.
I did see that, yeah.
For superheroes that I've seen on the news a couple times, and it looks very, very interesting.
Absolutely.
So advertising for our neighbors in Rancho. And we'll start with council comments. Mike, you want to start us off?
Sure, thank you. Earlier this week, I got invited to a new restaurant that opened next to McCooney's called Broderick's, which is owned by somebody here in the Sacramento region. They have a few different restaurants around. And it was a little louder than I like, but the food was terrific, and the staff is delightful. So check that out. The, to those people who did not get a commission appointment, I would encourage you to please make yourself part of those commissions anyway and attend the meetings. The Utility Commission particularly, which I sat on once before, in the two years I was there, had exactly zero people in the audience for all meetings. And you can definitely be the loudest voice if you are in the audience there. So make sure that you participate anyway, and if that doesn't float your boat, there's lots of service clubs in Folsom that you should consider joining. We have Moose Lions, Kiwanis Eagles, and three Rotary Clubs, so pick one and do some good work. Thank you.
Roger?
Yeah, I wanted to congratulate our Folsom Bulldogs for their back-to-back champlines, CIF, so go Bulldogs. The, I'm excited to work with Councilmember Sheldon and our FCUSD partners on that commission, or that two-by-two, so I'm happy with that. And if I may request that we close this meeting in honor of Corporal Singh and his family.
Sure.
Thank you. That's all I got. Thank you.
Ernie?
Well, it's going to be an interesting couple of years for me that I've got left, but I'm looking forward to the challenge. We've got a lot of new people here, a lot of new people on the commissions. That means a lot of new ideas and a lot of learning curves, but I'm optimistic that we all are going to get along and we're going to, but one thing, our priority, that's the people of this town, period. Everything else comes in lesser priority, but not ignored. So I'm looking forward to that, and as long as I can stay up, not fall down no more, things will be great. My son is, after this video, I tasked him to come up with a, like a car protection, you know, a vest that I can wear if I fall down, I just become a big bubble and bounce around. That's his next challenge for me. But no, it's been good. It's a good year. We're looking forward to the new college year. We're all going to get together. We have, there'll be a number of discussions, and there are going to be some agreements and some disagreements, but we're going to be professional, and we're going to be accommodating, I believe, and we're not going to kill our city manager or staff. We're all going to work together, and things are going to be fine.
I guess I'm up. Just, I want to echo the comments to thank everybody who applied for a commission. Obviously, we have more qualified applicants than we have space available. Keep in mind that the county and Supervisor Sue Frost are always looking for volunteers, as is the school district. A special thank you to the commissioners who served for the past two years or four years. I did ask the city manager for attendance records, and I will tell you that the attendance overall is stellar by our commissioners. Mr. Pugh and Mr. Chalamchirla, 100% attendance. Mr. Pugh and Mr. Chalamchurla, 100% attendance. So thank you for serving the city so well.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start with just reporting out of some of the meetings I've attended recently. SACOG meeting, which was held on December 20th. They have elected a new chair and vice chair. David Sander from Rancho Cordova is the incoming chair. And vice chair is from the Davis City Council. They... The new MTP has been in process for a few years, and that will be coming back. That's the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. That will be approved in 2020, as they continue to work on that. So if anybody's interested in that, you can, as a member of the public or as an alternate, attend the SACOG meeting. And you can get that information about the days that they meet from the SACOG website. And SACOG is Sacramento Area Council of Governments. They are working with our federal legislators on making sure there's sufficient funding in the federal infrastructure bill. They are still working on Civic Lab, is working on commercial corridors reinvestment. And they talked about a number of retirements and outgoing board members for SACOG. So that's what happened on the 20th. And more recently on, excuse me, just prior to that, on December 13th, we had our STA meeting. That next meeting will be on February 14th. But we talked about the Highway 50 Transportation Management and the Greater Folsom Partnership list of projects along Highway 50. And those are projects that we are hoping to get funded, basically predominantly between Folsom and Rancho Cordova. There was also a discussion about the future expenditure plan that STA will be considering in making the decision as to whether or not to move forward in 2020 with another, well, what had been called in the last go-around Measure B, but basically be just an increase in sales tax specifically for transportation improvements in the region. Valley Vision also came forward with some of their suggestions to look at congestion on Highways 50 and 80, making, finding ways to make transit work for everyone, improve connectivity to the Bay Area, and improve connectivity to the Sacramento International Airport. Other than that, we've had quite a bit of rain the last couple of days. It's been very, very slippery. I was at a light earlier today, and I think six cars at least turned left after their light had turned red. Very dangerous situation, especially with the roadways wet. So please, everyone, drive carefully like your mother's following you or Chief Hillman, or, you know, the fire department's in front of you. So just please, 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 drive carefully and pay attention. And the next couple of days are, in addition to, you know, losing the rain, the fog is apparently going to return, as it was when I went to the airport very early this morning. Thank you again to all the people that took so much time and put a lot of detail, frankly, into the applications for the various boards and commissions. This is, as the council race was, by far the largest number of applicants we've had in the 20 years that I've been on this council. So thank you to all of you, and I hope we can find a way to utilize your expertise if you were not selected for that, whatever board or commission you initially applied for. I, again, welcome Mike and Sarah and look forward to us working together diligently on behalf of the residents of this great city. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting in honor of Fallen Officer Singh. And we adjourn at 7:45.